Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Region 12 Public District Budget Hearing to order. My name is Jim Hirschfield. I will read the notice of the public budget hearing. Notice of public budget hearing. Notice hereby given to all those entitled to vote in town meetings in the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington that a public hearing will be held on Monday, April 8, 2013, at 7:00 PM in the library of the Chaparral Valley Middle High School, 159 South Street, Washington, Connecticut. To present the annual budget for the year 2013-2014, prepared by the Regional Board of Education for Chaparral Valley Regional School District 12, copies of which will be available at the public meeting. Chaparral Valley Regional School District 12, Bridgewater, Roxbury, Washington, by James Hirschfield, Chairman, Board of Education, Washington, D.C., Connecticut, 06794. Thank you all for coming. The next item on our, on the agenda is an overview presentations of the budget process and the 2013-14 annual budget for Regional School District 12. After that, we will have questions or statements concerning the budget. So I've asked our finance chairman, Chairwoman Valerie Anderson, to take us through the overview presentation of the budget. Valerie?
Does everyone have a copy or access to?
Copy's here.
I want to say, Pat Constantino and Bob Geeson, for them, for their help in assembling the budget, we had a series of workshops that the finance committee basically hosted. We invited town people to come. It was open to boards of finance, members of Board of Selectmen, so that they could come and see the process as each and every administrator presented their wish list. And this went through that meeting, through Bob, through Pat, then through the meeting, and then became our budget that was presented by Pat two weeks ago. The budget goes up 1.43 percent. It is projected to be $21,660,890. 1.43 percent over the previous present budget year. Some of the highlights are, we go by object code, and I'm not going to go into detail. On March 20th, we had a pretty thorough budget workshop. We went item by item, detail by detail. And in fact, if you have the budget document, you'll see in the back what we call the S pages. These are the kind of detail of the larger numbers. And if you want that kind of detail, and in the course of this meeting, if you have questions, we can direct you, Bob certainly can, I can, or Pat, to the proper details. So you see the line by line increase or decrease and why. But basically, the main increase in the budget is due to supplies coming from the four schools, the three elementary, middle, and high. We've stayed steady in many categories. We have, of course, just contractual obligations, increases in personnel and in pay and in other services, because these are contractual obligations to our unions. But I think the most salient thing would be, that's, that's just to keep, you know, the doors open, the kids in. But if you look all the way to page, excuse me for a second, and this is just a quick overview, because we could get into some detail if your questions go that way. But on page nine is the enhancements, the property and program improvements. And you see that we have capital learning technology and facilities, and it is proposed capital technology of $212,000. And you see detail, some detail there about a program of line, smart boards, Chrome notebooks, and IMAX for staff. You see capital facilities, which shows improvements and maintenance, well, capital expenditures, maintenance is another category altogether, which is an ongoing operational maintenance. But various parts of capital facilities, expenditures that we are going to make, this, the real number that you should be looking at is the fact that we are going to have increased our security here with security cameras, door latches, everything we can do to make this building and the three buildings safer. And some of that expenditure is going to be funded from other sources, not the operating budget per se, but $60,000 is dedicated out of the operating budget for that. But we are going to do a comprehensive security improvement funded in different ways. We do have sources of money for the elementary schools, we're going to tap into that. The operational budget hit is about $60,000. In terms of program improvement, we are going to be decreasing total staff by 6.1 FTEs. We are going to have some decrease in staff, but we are also going to hire a resource officer and a part-time college advisor to increase our program there. And we have other programs ongoing. We have changes in stipends that our teachers get when they do extra work. We've kind of, the superintendent has cleaned up the stipends so that it's, it's a more regulated type of extra income. And we do have expenditures to enhance a virtual high school. So with our declining population, we can still offer good program, but via the Internet. So that is it, basically, increase 1.43 percent.
That's it?
That is it. That's a thumbnail? That's a real quickie. That's a, pick and dirty, as we call it.
All right. Thank you. All right, item four, questions and/or statements concerning the budget for any members of the public. If you're going to speak, would you go to the lectern, please, and just please state your name and address, your name and the town you're from, please? I'm sorry, Ed? It's my turn? Yes, please.
Okay. All right. You guys can hear me? Am I supposed to speak into this thing?
No.
And the fact that I can't hear you most of the time, it's okay. The first question has to do with the capital, what is it called, the program improvements change? Down there is a reduction of, in this page number nine? Page number nine?
Yep.
Okay, we're talking about reducing FTEs, a number of categories, fourth grade teachers, high school teacher, and so forth, right? My question is, these numbers, do they include benefits? Or are they just the salary numbers?
No, they include benefits. These are people.
Benefits, less unemployment.
I'm sorry.
There's, unemployment offsets part of the benefits, so it's a net number that's there.
So it does include the benefits?
Correct.
Well, these are people.
I guess I'll take that offline?
Correct.
And, and follow that up, because it doesn't seem to be jive with the numbers that you're coming out in the long-term planning committee. So we'll take that offline. The next question is, in the, in the budget, there are two, I know that there are two high school guidance professionals in, in, in the high school and two middle school professionals for guidance in the middle school. Do we really need four people for guidance in, with our declining population in, in the building here?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, well, um...
What are these people doing? That's, I guess, I don't know.
Well, let me, those are two questions. The first question, question, we are, when I think of guidance counselors, I think of pupil personnel services who deal with students and their social emotional needs. So we have, in the building, school psychologists, social worker, and guidance counselors. And this year, after meeting with the administrative staff, and I told them I would like to make a cut in personnel in one of those areas, we had decided that the social worker position would be the one that would hurt us the least, because this year we had hired a school psychologist. And so what we are going to do is, we are going to reallocate some of those four people so that they take over some of the job and the responsibilities of the social worker that we are cutting. So I would never recommend to eliminate a social worker and a guidance counselor at this point. So that's why we're keeping four guidance counselors, but they are going to take over some of the roles of social worker. Now, the things they do, they do many things. Guidance counselors at the high school are a lot different than other guidance counselors, because they do a lot of preparing students for college and career readiness, dealing with colleges, dealing with transcripts, writing letters of recommendation, meeting with families, doing financial aid, preparing for college application time, SAT, all of that stuff. Then, other guidance counselors throughout the system deal with children and their emotional needs. And there are many emotional needs that kids have on a daily basis. You know, little kids have little problems, and big kids have bigger problems. So you can run the gamut from someone who's having to deal with divorce in their family, or death in their family, or problems, interpersonal problems in classrooms between children. Then you get some deeper problems where students deal with depression, anxiety, sometimes terrible things, you know, suicide possibly, drug addiction, all of those things, they run the gamut. So it's really important in a school that you have professionals who are trained to deal with students when they have these emotional needs and crises.
So this apparently has nothing to do with the size of the student body. In other words...
Well, yes, it does.
We have a small student body in the middle school, we still have two guidance people in the middle school.
Well, I, let me just reiterate, those two people in the middle school are going to have to do some of the work that the social worker did in the three elementary schools. So although it says that there are two in the middle school, we're not going to have two full-time people in the middle school, which is going to have an impact on our developmental guidance program, because those teachers in the middle school also teach the guidance counselors. So although it seems like there's two in the middle school, until we have a chance to reallocate people, it looks that way, but really, it's not that way.
Okay. Next question is, there's only three more questions, so I mean, I try to brief, brief.
No problem.
I see where there's a middle school principal salary in the, in the, in the budget, and the superintendent has stated that they're basically going to have one principal's office in this building for, I guess, six through 12.
Yes.
So I question, why, why is there a middle school principal's salary in the budget?
Well, there's going to be a six-12 principal and a six-12 associate principal. At this point, with negotiations with the current union, because the person filling that position will most likely be someone already in our union, it would be unfair to change their salary. If that job goes to someone outside of the union, then the salary will be less and renegotiated.
Okay, the next last question is, what does a resource officer do? I mean, you mentioned a resource officer district-wide. What does a resource officer do? I have no clue what that is.
A school resource officer is a, usually, a police person, whether they're part of a police station or state police. They are someone who is in your building. For our region, it would be a regional person. It would be someone who would be part of our staff, work with students, work with staff, help to make sure that safety plans and lockdowns and fire drills are all done properly, review what we're doing, help us to develop an all-hazards approach to keeping students and staff safe. He would, he or she would be a person who would become part of the community so that kids realize that police are good people. So in the elementary schools, it's like an officer friendly comes in, talks about all the things and that a police officer does and the good they do to the community. In the middle and high school, it's someone who maybe has their ear to the ground a little bit more, makes sure he's or she is up on any problems that are brewing, and helps keep our building safe and secure as best as anyone can.
Okay, thank you. The last question, it's probably a little out of line. I wonder where the maintenance costs are? I mean, that's a broad question, I'm sure. But I, I mean, I haven't really gone through the budget to see where the maintenance costs are for the buildings. Is the, and the maintenance costs identified separately for the each building? Or is it just the general maintenance costs that is, is, I don't know where, where, where to look, you know?
Bob, can you help us with that?
Sure. All, the back of these pages are all of the things by finding, by location, in the first part of the account code. But if you were looking specific, maintenance is based upon everything from buying oil to electricity to actually doing maintenance and building upkeep. If you're looking for specifics...
I'm wondering about maintaining this building here.
Building upkeep is $430,000?
It's about $188,000, this projection. It's gone about $215,000, $182,000.
Yeah, where are you though?
I'm sorry, page, page four of 10 is the detail, and if you're talking about specifically building repairs and upkeep, which is midway down.
Oh, yeah, $430,000, okay.
So that's, and it ties back to page six in...
Fourth row, two rows.
Okay, well, that's my question. That's, that's enough to keep it busy.
Anything else? Anything else? I just wanted to supplement something Dr. Constantino said about the resource officer. Obviously, the budget passes, the person hasn't been hired yet, and they'll have to interview people, but my understanding is, it doesn't necessarily have to be an active police officer. It would be somebody, I assume, with a police background, but it might not be a person, an active person on a local or state police staff, we're just not sure yet. But it would likely be somebody with a police background at the...
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Al Trowbridge, I live in Washington, and I'm a Roxbury native. Tonight, I am asking for what I believe is the fourth time, what is the per pupil cost for the REACH Pre-K program for the current year as well as next year under the proposed budget? I would also like to know if the information previously supplied by your staff still holds true. Do they still maintain that they have a capacity for 28 students with six empty slots and yet have a waiting list of 12 children, with 12 children on it? How many children from each of our three towns do you have enrolled for next year? How many of those children are enrolled, are actually special needs children? Have these parents been told that they are enrolling their children in what Mr. Brown points out is a special education program when they sign up? Mr. Brown has stated that we are required to spend a certain percentage of our budget on special education. I've spent hours trying to find that statute in camp. Perhaps someone could give us the statute number. Dr. Constantino has pointed out that we in Region 12 have what is a surprisingly high number of children that are in the special needs category. I believe she used the figure 15 percent. I also believe that Mr. Brown stated that we are required to spend 5 percent of our budget on special education. It seems to me that if we have 15 percent of our students with special needs, we shouldn't have any trouble meeting the minimum special aides expenditure requirement on students that actually have special needs, rather than on what quite frankly sounds like a shell game to me when we use REACH Pre-K to meet this requirement. I'm also asking again tonight, that what is the per pupil cost in the proposed budget for each of our elementary schools as well as for our middle school and high school? I would like to point out that other regional school districts in our area are way ahead of us in dealing with declining enrollment. Region 6, where they have the same number of elementary schools and a single middle high school, the same as we do, has a total of 163 full-time equivalent employees compared to our 181 FTEs. They educate 226 more students than we do, and they do it with 18 less full-time employees than we have. I read in Friday's Waterbury Republican American that Region 1, also known as Suicetonic, is proposing a budget for next year that calls for a 1 percent decrease in spending for next year. It can be done. I have attended some of the long-term planning, planning committee meetings. There are dozens of wonderfully committed members of the board, staff, and public, putting untold hours into attempting to deal with our educational future. My fear is that after all of this effort, regardless of what plan emerges from this process, it will be doomed to failure at the polls, because the voters of Region 12 simply will not believe that the Board of Education will ever allow any proposed savings to actually take place. The current board has demonstrated this as clear as can be by the way they have allowed the REACH program to be expanded and moved when the need for the program shrunk to the point where one teacher and one aide could have more than covered its needs. That is the extent of what is mandated. I do not doubt that good would come out of this program, but to pay salaries of special ed teachers to teach three and four-year-olds when there are other options in the area, in my opinion, is irresponsible use of taxpayer dollars. The oft-repeated remark that we have the money and the budget, so we might as well go ahead with this expansion clearly illustrates where the problem lies. It is at that table. Once the need for a particular program goes away or is lessened, more often than not, the funds are simply diverted to another use. Further illustration of this practice is found in the proposed budget where a social worker is no longer needed, but all of a sudden, we need to add a foretense college and career center staff member. Our guidance people have nearly 100 less students to service than they did just a few short years ago, and yet we need to add staff in this area? As I, as I have followed the news accounts of how area schools are dealing with the new reality of our world following Sandy Hook, I read that most are doing something very similar to what is proposed in our budget. The difference that I note is that most school systems are budgeting anywhere from $25,000 to, I believe, the highest I have seen is $40,000. We are budgeting $70,000. If this figure was prorated over 180 days of the school year, it would probably come out to more than what the full-time salary of a state trooper is. I believe if most, if not all of these positions are being filled by retired state troopers or local retired policemen, so I believe the $70,000 is much higher than need be. Please explain how, if we only have one student signed up from Sherman for next year, can we have a tuition up for non-resident students and the income in the amount of You people sitting at this table have the ability, working with your superintendent, to spend the next half hour paring this budget down to where it is a zero increase. All it takes is a little courage, and you would be sending a clear message to the voters in our region that you really do care about skyrocketing costs of education. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. There was a lot of questions there, I don't have them all. Dr. Constantino, can you...
I think I can help you, Ken.
Okay.
I have all your questions.
Can you speak to the REACH program, Dr. Constantino?
Well, I'm going to ask Ally O'Hara to speak to the REACH program, only because she's in charge of it, and she can give you better information than I can.
Ally, did you hear the man's comments?
Uh-huh. If you could read the questions, that would be helpful.
Oh. Well, you, I don't know what the, these you can answer. What is the per pupil cost for the REACH Pre-K program?
Yeah, we're going to have to figure that one out.
We'll have to, okay.
Over costs.
I would also like to know if the information previously supplied by your staff still holds true. Do they maintain that they have a capacity for 28 students with six empty slots and yet have a waiting list with 12 children on it?
I think the waiting list was about last year. The current situation would be 32 students.
No money, no...
Thirty-two students right now for our program.
Is the waiting...
Are registered.
About current year?
Current year, we had, we had 13 students on our waiting list that we turned away last year.
And how many are in the program?
Twenty-three? Twenty-two.
With a capacity of 28. So that's my question, why aren't some of those people on your waiting list?
Well, our capacity is larger now, because we have two separate classrooms full of students. So our capacity wasn't 28 last year, or this current school year. It was less than that.
All right. How many children, how many children from each of our three towns do you have enrolled for next year?
I don't know the towns off, off of my head.
Do you know what the current, the projected enrollment is for next year?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
And we've sent letters to these families?
I'm awaiting the registration packets. I have about half of them back, they're due by April 15.
And they could choose, if I'm correct, they could choose to leave at 12, everybody starts at 9:00? They could leave at 12:00 and get bus service, or they could stay till 2:00 and be picked up?
Could I ask a question related to that? Your staffing is still going to be the same, if you get 32 kids?
Staffing is still the same.
You have how many? It's like two full-time and...
It's two teachers and two pairs.
Two pair of professionals?
Two pairs.
For 32?
Not, yes, 16 and 16. Teacher in each room and a pair in each room.
That includes the two-year-olds?
That includes...
Two-year-old, 10 months.
Anybody that is three by December 31st can join our group? So yes.
How many of those children that are enrolled are actually special needs children?
Two.
All right, those are the stu, this year?
That's the guaranteed. Yes, we grow each year, yes.
What's that? Explain what you mean by that.
Well, we have child, we have, those are the students that are currently identified, that will continue to be a part of our program. Our program grows anywhere from, it really depends from year to year. Our program's only grown this year by one student, but last year by four. So over the course of the year, we identify students living in the district, whose parents let us know, or whose nursery school lets the parents know to tell us, you know, to do some evaluating, and then our, potentially, we grow. So anyone that has a special need is guaranteed a spot with us. Okay, so sometimes it grows from within, sometimes we notice something about our students that we, in working with them, we identify some needs, and we identify them as special education through our work with them. Sometimes they come from outside of the district, through other preschools, or through families that are concerned about the development of their children.
All right, well, okay, thank you. This is the way the question is framed, I'm not necessarily attributing this to Mr. Brown, but it says, have these parents been told that they are enrolling their children in what Mr. Brown points out as a special education program when they sign up?
They're, it's explained to them that it's an integrated preschool, and that means that there are special needs students in our program. They absolutely are told that.
Again, this is just what the question is. Mr. Brown has stated that we are required to spend a certain percentage of our budget on special education. Is that, is that accurate?
We need to, we're mandated to support students with special needs.
All right, so whatever it is, we have to do.
But we're only talking technically two kids here.
Right, they're currently six, next year, two guaranteed.
I'm sorry, say that again, there's currently...
Currently six in our program. Some of them will age out of our program and move on to other schools. Currently, six. Next year, two guaranteed.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Currently, six in our program. Some of them will age out of our program and move on to other schools, and there are guaranteed two next year.
All right. I think that does it for you. Thank you very much. Further question, Bob, I don't know if you can help us with this. I'm also asking, what is the per pupil cost in the proposed budget for each of our elementary schools as well as for our middle and high school?
I haven't broken that down that way, Jim, but we do do an overall per pupil cost that's in the budget.
Can you tell us where it is, Bob?
Sure. Per pupil costs are listed. The net current expenditure is on the very interior page of the cover of the document. It's also found within page number twelve of the net current expenditure for the thirteen-fourteen proposal is twenty-one-nine-seventy-five.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-one-nine-seventy-five. And the twelve-thirteen is estimated at twenty-one-five-ninety-five. That's on page twelve.
All right.
That excludes debt service?
That's, it excludes the pieces as the formula outlines at the back of the document. It's the full net current expenditure number.
So it's not?
We have to pull those pieces out.
So it's not just budget divided by?
Right. Exactly.
Correct.
And it's actually done on an average daily attendance they factor. Because we go more than a hundred and eighty days, and we have some summer kids that get factored into it, you just can't take the dollar value of the budget, take those pieces out, and jam it by the number of students. Even the students are tempered by what's called average daily attendance. They give you credit for those numbers.
Jim, but clearly this is quite different from indeed the numbers that we're working on in the long-range planning where we have?
Those are at the gross, the very highest level that we're talking about.
And that's an actual division of budget per school, per child.
That's really a division.
Because that goes from like thirty-two thousand for Bridgewater to an average twenty-five thousand.
All the way down. Sure.
I'm sorry, Ally. What did you say goes from what?
Thirty-two thousand and change to educate a child in Bridgewater, and the average of the middle and high schools about twenty-five thousand.
Actually, twenty-three with the middle high school. And it's twenty-five for the other two elementary schools. All right. Lastly, please, Bob, I don't know if you can help me with this. Explain how, if we only have one student signed up from Sherman for next year, can we have a tuition for non-resident students of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars?
Sure. The way the budget's, the revenue is, it's for all four grades. You have students, there's one new coming in that we know of into our mix of numbers. There's a total of twenty students that have been budgeted for revenue, less the bus, and we've always had one additional student that's not related to, it's just the student that pays tuition to us. Either they're completing their education and the parents are paying because they moved away, or in some cases, it's somebody from another district. The parents are paying, so it shows up in that line. But there's twenty students from Sherman.
All right. One new one that we know of.
Correct. You take it, you take out the twelfth graders, you put in the new ninth, and that's how you get to twenty.
Mr. Trowbridge, does that answer your questions? That's all the things in yellow.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is anyone else? Yes, sir.
Want me to have the microphone?
Please. It's not a microphone.
Non-mic.
Just a suggestion. I mean, and this occurs at many board meetings. People have difficulty hearing the board because you're all going that way, more or less, and it doesn't get out into the back so easy. And this has come up many times. It may behoove you to either have a microphone working somewhere. I think it's a little nuanced, but nevertheless, it doesn't take much to get people moving. I came here tonight because as a former board member, Al and I were board members together. And based on your questions, Al, it's time for you to get re-elected and get up here. That was what I used to say. If you got a problem with the budget, get yourself elected. You can deal with it personally. But Al was a great board member and chairman for a while, and it was a lot of fun sitting with him. I didn't come here tonight to belabor the budget. I'm a bottom-line board member. I was a bottom-line board member, and I'm a bottom-line taxpayer. I didn't get involved in all the intricacies of the budget, even though you sit through budget hearings, budget meetings. Bob and the superintendent of the staff knows pretty much what's in the budget. I looked at the number. How is it going to affect taxpayers? How is it going to affect the money that the town is taking budget for education and not have for, you know, town facilities? And right now, the town of Washington, about seventy percent of the budget is school, while less than ten percent of the people who use the school system, or like, excuse me, ten percent of the population that uses a school system are responsible for seventy cents of every dollar. I think that's the biggest issue that you do face as a board. Thirty percent is left for the town to take care of infrastructure, to take care of all the commissions that have agendas. So that's the biggest obstacle you're going to face here, now, and in the future. What's left for the towns when you get done with it? Your budget is finished with them, what's good luck? I think that's a very important issue for the future. As a bottom-line taxpayer, I always looked at the number. What is the bottom number that you're going to be sending me, and how much is it? And I think that's a key factor. At one point four, I'll tell you, I don't see much opposition to this budget. You can pick out little things in the budget like Al was bringing up, and some of them are certainly good for the board to ponder. But I think the budget is a number in the end. How does it affect education? How does it affect the people in the towns? I would like to ask the superintendent one question, and I know she's been through this before. There are people who vote for and against the budget based on other aspects of the budget, things that come up during the year. And one of the things that came up, I think, is an issue, just based on who's running for the Board of Ed in Washington, is block scheduling. And I think we need a minute or two from the superintendent. When you came here, there was block scheduling. Some of us involved understand it. Maybe the public doesn't. But you made some alterations. What were those alterations? Did they affect the budget? And what were the pros of what you implemented? And I think that's an important issue for many people in town. Not for myself, but I think that's an issue which pulled out a lot of people in the audience. They voiced their opinions, and it may be a reason they may even vote against the budget. I couldn't tell you yes up and down. But I think it would be good to answer that.
Well, I think you bring up a good point. Just as a little refresher on the block scheduling, when I came here, although I didn't start officially until July first, I really was in the schools in April and was able to look at the programming, getting to classrooms. I evaluated every teacher's schedule. I evaluated their class loads. I looked at the data, state testing data, school data. I met with every principal. I met with teachers. I met with faculty, students, parents, spoke to the Board of Education, and was concerned about a couple of things that were glaring in my face. And the main one is that students in the block schedule did not get continuous instruction in math, science, and world language. And too many students had either six months or a year between these very intense curriculum areas, which was causing a lot of problems for kids. And I was hearing that from parents, many parents, who were concerned that their students were not getting this instruction, concerned that they had to choose between Spanish and music, or Spanish and math. And this was going on. And so after considerable discussions and trying to come to some consensus, I realized that it was my job to lead and to make a change. The change is really going to be wonderful. We're seeing great things going on right now with Power School. We're going to have a seven-period day in which every day, one period drops out, so students will have six classes a day. Each teacher in both the middle and the high school will teach five out of seven classes. Each teacher will have a planning period, and they'll have a PLC, which is a professional learning period, where they can meet with their colleagues and plan. We are going to be able to have SRBI, scientific research-based intervention for kids who need intervention. We're going to be able to offer electives. We're bringing in virtual high school. All of the students and their families have met with the counselors, and everybody's schedule is being finalized. The middle school teachers are happy because now no longer do they have forty-four minutes, they have fifty-seven minutes for a class. And the high school teachers, where they were really, really pro-block, which was in the humanities, is still there. So science and social studies are being taught together still. So we have the best of both worlds.
English and studies.
What did I say?
Science and studies.
I'm sorry. English and social studies are being taught together. We have the best of both worlds, and I think it's really going to be beneficial for everyone. We have sixty students who are interested in taking virtual high school courses. We have the opportunity now to make our school bigger and offer more AP courses. As a matter of fact, every AP course that's given out there. We can share staff. And so all of these opportunities are going to allow us to use our staff and our resources more effectively, more efficiently. And I'm very pleased. I know that there are people who are still, they get happened too quickly, but because of integrating the Common Core state standards into the curriculum, and because of Power School, and because of the new assessments and the teacher evaluation, it just made sense to do this, to get it over with, and move forward. So that's what we're doing. I think everyone understands it. I think the staff is okay. We're seeing great things with Power School.
Pat, what is Power School?
And that's it. Sorry.
No, no. For people who don't know what Power School is.
Power School is a student database. We're moving from Reddicker to Power School. We are currently doing our scheduling on Power School. We are getting all of the student information into Power School. It's going to allow parents to get into Power, Parent Portal, which will allow them to see teachers' grade books, which will allow them to dig down to see if their kids are doing their work or not, or absent or not. So it really is just all part of everything that fits into the long-range plan that the community worked on to move us where we need to be.
Just a minute. I'm sorry. I just want to, with regard to block scheduling, you decided to make the change. Can you speak to what you found regarding, you said, teacher course load, pupil load?
Yeah. There were, there were a lot of problems with the schedule. So for example, we had some staff, paraprofessionals especially, who couldn't be used in both schools because they were on different schedules. Same thing with some teachers.
When you say both schools, you mean the middle?
I mean, the middle and the high schools, because they were on totally different timeframes. We had some teachers whose caseloads are very, very low. And that's where you want to make sure that everybody has the amount of students they should have. So for example, an English teacher in a high school could have between anywhere between, well, honestly, seventy-five and ninety is really nice. You know, but you go to some schools where they have a hundred and fifty students a semester, which is very difficult. And we had some very low caseloads here.
Like what?
Well, you know, the, I don't want to say exactly like what, but okay, to give you examples, we had people.
The public.
I know. I know. We had, we had, we had teachers in this building who had caseloads in the forties and a couple who even had a little less. And that's, you know, and that's such as English. That's across the board. So we really wanted to equalize the amount of kids for teachers. And this, what's going to happen now as the years go on is that we're going to have to start reducing staff. That's what's going to happen as the years go on. This year, we did cut eight staff members. I know some people wanted us to do more, but we have to keep the integrity of our instructional program and of our school, and you can't just cut and slash without giving thought. So every year, we will be, you know, cutting a little more as, you know, our numbers decline. I mean, we're all aware of that, but that's very hard for people to understand. That causes a lot of stress for staff, for parents, for kids, which, you know, has an impact on the school culture. So we have to balance. There has to be a balancing act.
Michael, you just answered. Okay. So was it fair to say then that the changes that you proposed to the block scheduling, which the board adopted, would have some budgetary impacts?
Well, they have had budgetary impacts. They have, we are losing a high school position. Okay? We're losing three paraprofessionals. We are, the combination of the two schools is the elimination of two secretaries. So they are. It has impacts. And next year, it'll have more.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to add something to that. Pat, I think one of the misnumbers of the whole process was is that you didn't really eliminate the block schedule. What you did is you modified it. And you modified it so you've got, and I just went through a schedule with my child and could see what was in there. You've modified it so you still have the math and social studies, the social studies in English, as you said. You still have those combined into a two, almost two-hour block, just under two hours. And so you've got almost a longer block for that. You're now still able, even though your science and math classes are now running all year, they're now year-long courses as opposed to semester courses. So you're able to get those subjects in the smaller bites that a lot of professionals that you presented to us indicated are probably better for retention of that. You also eliminated, by having those courses run a year, you eliminated the problem that we were running into where a student might take a class in math and be prepared to take the AP test on it in, what, April or May? And, it's May, actually. And yet, the last time they had studied that subject was in January.
Right.
And so you had a situation in which you were taking those tests with a large gap between actually studying that subject, because they had moved on to four other subjects in that second semester. So there were a whole host of reasons why we retained the best part of the block, the part that worked the best, in the English and social studies classes. We improved the ability to deliver a math and science education. We haven't stinted on labs because the way the schedule lays out, there's extra time for that in there. So we still have the ability to have longer-period science labs. We have a better flow on the math and science courses. And the other thing we're eliminating is by having the unified schedule between the two schools, you also, remember, told us that at the end of the day, as the enrollment dropped, we were going to be forced, with the two schools balkanized, to have more teachers as partial FTEs.
Right.
And the problem with that is, is if you have a bunch of teachers who are partial FTE teachers, maybe there are point two, a point three, a point four, when that teacher finds a full-time one-point-zero FTE position, they leave. So what we were expecting for them was a large turnover, a constant roiling turnover of staff resulting from the reduction in population applied to the way the block schedule had balkanized the schedules, particularly in the middle school. And talk about the kind of upheaval that would result from never really knowing who your child's teacher was going to be the next year as people moved and left because their positions had been reduced to smaller than a full FTE. So there were a lot of reasons why amending the block schedule as it was done made good sense for the educational program, and not just because it was convenient for the operation of the school, but because it enabled us to retain a richer program in years going forward than we otherwise would have had, and because it was causing problems as it existed for some students. Some students probably thrived in it and loved it, and we certainly heard from their parents. But there are some students who didn't, and we heard from them too. And the difficulty we have is we have to educate everybody, not just one subset. And I think that the program is going to be, I think, once people experience it next year, they're going to find that it's a vast improvement over what we had before. But I think anyone that's out there saying that the block schedule has been eliminated is not providing information that is accurate. It hasn't been eliminated. It's been improved and modified. And the other thing to remember is you assured us, and I hope that's still the case, that in the event that there are other classes that would do better in the block, in a block arrangement, that that's a decision that's going to be made by the building principals, or the new, now it's going to be the six-twelve principal, that that's a decision that's going to be made at that level. This is a data-driven decision being made by the professionals on staff if it turns out other classes are amenable to that. So for a variety of reasons, it wasn't, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that it was a whole coded list of interrelated reasons. that it was a whole coded list of interrelated reasons, and mostly devoted to how the education is delivered, and the best way to teach the program, and to have the kids achieve at the highest levels.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'd like to give the members of the public an opportunity to follow. Go ahead.
Well, exactly right. I don't think we need to relitigate the block scheduling. It was about the timing and the swiftness of the decision, probably more than anything else. So, why don't we get back to the budget?
Is there anyone else who'd like, has a question, who'd like to address us? Yes, sir.
Mr. Boyer.
Can I stay here if I speak loud enough?
No, they, they need you on camera, sir.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. I have a very short question. Based on the data here, I have, divided, John Boyer from Washington.
Thank you.
Divided, expected number of students of seven-ninety-four next year into next year's budget of twenty-one million, four-twenty, seven-fifty-one. And I get approximately twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred per student. And yet, the student number currently is listed at twenty-one, five-ninety-five. So, hopefully, a five-thousand-dollar differential, I'd be interested in what that is.
Sure. Again, go back to, if you look at the very last page of the budget document.
The very last.
It's an explanation of what comes out of a budget to get to that net current expenditure. You're not taking.
So, in other words.
You're not taking the gross amount to get to.
So, what are the adjustments? I haven't read it. I don't want to take the time here.
There are debt, there is adult education, services for non-public school children. Any tuition received is backed out, so that, when we were talking about that tuition that we received, that would come out of that money as well to lower it, so that's why you're getting down to that level as well. And finally, did I mention the debt?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's the biggest piece that'll, that'll drive it down some more. But when you start backing out all these costs, what their state is trying to do is give you some basis to compare yourself to other districts, because not all districts have the same cost. It varies from district to district. Those are the costs they want backed out to get to a net current expenditure, so you could compare yourself across districts.
Well, if you can back out debt per student, you can back out any, any number you choose, and you're still backing out numbers of the total cost.
But, he's referring to a state statute.
Well, if the state statute says to do it, I agree, you have to do it. But is the debt, cover that differential of some five thousand per kid?
Well, there's debt, there's other pieces to this as well that'll take it out. I'll give you a complete calculation.
But is it fair to say, Bob, I'm starting to throw it, is it fair to say that Mr. Boyer's gross number, twenty-six or whatever, is approximately correct?
Yeah.
And the net number is correct from backing up the statutory backouts? So, yes, you're right.
What is backed out? What you're saying is pretty much all statutorily required to be backed out.
Yes, it's on the last page, it's set for.
You're still paying for it.
You're still paying for it, but it's just.
The state isn't jumping in and picking up that differential, it's just a different way of doing a calculation.
Bob, can I ask you a question? On, on the last page, it says for the gross total expenditure.
Correct.
Which is what Mr. Boyer is really looking for.
Right, he's looking at the top.
Is twenty-five, five-seventy-four. So, it's about forty-five-hundred dollars more than the twenty-one, nine-seventy-five, that's the net expenditure. So, the reason for the net is it's a state law required formula for us to include in here, and the gross, we're giving you both numbers if you look at the last page. And I admit, it's, when you go through it line by line, it can be confusing.
It is.
But the last page tells the story.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By law, we have to supply that number, the net current expenditure.
Is there anyone else? Ma'am? Just state your name and where your office is.
Hi, I'm Amy Lovelace. I'm a Washington resident. And I just wanted to thank you guys. I know this is a very difficult process to do, and you're in a situation where certain things just aren't going to decrease. Benefits, I mean, that negotiating job is amazing. I used to be head of a human resources department, and having an increase that low is unbelievable. I do have an eighth grader going into high school, and I was wondering if you could share with us what the high school teacher FTE elimination is.
The one position?
Yes.
It, it, it comes out of the humanities, and it comes out of, I think, a tech, am I right? Is it a tech class? It, it's two, it's two people. One person is being eliminated, and then another part of someone else.
Okay.
So, it's not, we're not losing any program.
It's two part, partial teachers.
Two parts of partial teachers.
Two teachers together make a one.
Make a one. So, it's no pro, we're not losing any programs at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my main concern. There was a resignation in the music department last week.
Yes.
And so, I'm very concerned about that. My daughter is a violin player. And then, I noticed in the detail, page five of ten, I mean, I realize this is a forest, and I'm looking maybe at a bush.
Okay.
But there is a decrease in the high school music trips, and I didn't know if maybe that was going to be covered some other way, or maybe that was just something that was going away.
You're looking at fifteen-hundred going down to eight-hundred.
Right.
Kim, are you, do you know offhand why the music trip went down about a thousand dollars?
They probably negotiated a better deal, they did better fundraising this year. Those, those prices go up and down, depending on the year.
I don't think, our music people are not eliminating or reducing their program. If anything, they're just finding better ways of funding.
Okay.
They may, they get support from the Friends of Shapag Music Program.
Yes, right.
So, it's just a matter of, they may have put more money into instruments this year and then are going to do fundraising themselves.
No, you know, I applaud those efforts to be creative.
Yes.
How you cover these types of things.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to kind of be aware.
We also have a plan in place for replacing the music position that we've lost.
Oh, great.
I just, I can't really announce that yet because it's not official.
No, I understand.
But we do have a plan in place.
Yeah. You know, it's unfortunate, he was such a talented person.
No doubt.
So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Could I just ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I just, I want to ask a question of Mr. Taggert, because he's, remarks on his past, what's the word for it, participation in this, this table. What years were you a member of this board?
Eighty-five, eighty-six, to ninety-five, ninety-six.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to address this? All right, I'll call this district, public district budget hearing closed. Thank you all very much. We're going to adjourn to two more board meetings right away, so we'll go right to that. All right, I'd like to call the six-twelve Board of Education Special Meeting to order. It is just about eight o'clock. I'll take attendance. Valerie?
I am here.
Tony? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Fran?
Here.
Reg?
Here.
Laird?
Yes.
Marty? He's not here, I'm sorry. Michelle?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
I'm here. Telly?
Here.
And Mike?
Here.
All right, so we're all here, except Marty. All right. Next item on the agenda, discussion of two thousand thirteen dash fourteen budget. At some appropriate time, motion to set and approve the school's district budget for the year two thousand thirteen fourteen. Valerie?
Well, I think the point has been made, or could be made, again and again, that we're losing five-point-six percent of our student population in this year alone, yet the budget went up one-point-four-three percent. Some of that we can understand, some of that's contractual, some of that is things that I believe we really need to do, i.e. the resource officer, and to enhance our security, obviously. But, it's still too high. And what I would like to do is to have the board look at page nine, capital technology. I expect to be roundly booed, but here it goes. I have found or identified two different areas, both in capital technology, that is the seven-thirty-three's and capital facilities, seven-thirty-four, where we could have a cut of two-hundred-and-fifty-two, two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. That doesn't get us to a flat budget, where even a flat budget is an increase in view of the decreased population. We know that, right? So, even if we stayed the same, it's still technically an increase, because we're educating far less children. But I do think this is the year that we must look very seriously, because we're going to do some big-picture issues in November, that's going to cost our member towns a lot, a lot of money. No matter what we do on the consolidation, or what we do at the elementary, the goal three, no matter what we do, it's going to be a big project, costing lots of money, big bond issues, we know it's going to happen. I think because we can't substantiate an increase in this budget whatsoever in view of that declining population, and that big lumbering cost elephant that's going to be coming very soon to us. I would like to suggest, I do not believe it's going to hurt our program, because everyone's bringing their own devices to school. We have computers everywhere, we have laptops everywhere, we have had a consistent program of replacing hardware all the time, all the time. I don't even want to, you know, add up all the numbers that we've been spending, year in and year out, year in and year out. And people have to understand, we are always buying new equipment, always, always. But this is not the year to buy a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars' worth of hardware comprised of laptops for every staff member and Chromebooks for three grades, eighth, ninth, and tenth. I believe that we have an educated staff that likely has some access to computers, either personally or sitting right there next to them in their, in their classrooms. I don't think it enhances our program, our program right now to buy the most expensive thirteen-hundred dollars-a-pop MacBook Pro thirteen. I am more than happy to exclude the smartboards, which, once again, we're rolling in the smartboards, which are all computerized. Keep the smartboards coming, fine. Keep the ten iMac Mini Art Labs for seventeen-thousand dollars, fine. Keep the ten computers for the two labs at ten grand, fine. But this is not the time to buy each and every staff person a brand-new laptop that's the top of the line. They don't need that kind of technology. They are not launching nuclear weapons, let's hope. And I think the Chromebooks for three classrooms can be tabled. Those kids are bringing in their own devices. And we're tripping over devices, we're tripping over computers. What I'd like to see someday is an inventory. And I'd like to know the staffing. I asked that a while back when we hired our, our, our tech physician. Who's running the shop? Where are these people? What do we have in our inventory now, before we start buying almost a hundred, well, two-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of new technology? So, I'd like to have this board consider cutting a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, still leaving some things in there, but this is new stuff. Let's cut that this budget year. I also would like to cut, and we have to think about this in terms of the one-percent fund balance, I know there's some ebb and flow in that balance. I've identified about twenty-seven, actually, thirty-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I, I correct myself again. Depending on what we can do with the sixty thousand for security cameras, that could come out of the one-percent fund. We can take eighty-seven-thousand, six-hundred dollars out of the operating fund and get the same work done out of the one-percent fund. So, I would like to make a motion that we cut a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars' worth of technology, basically laptops for everyone, and cut eighty-seven-thousand, six-hundred dollars from capital expenditures that we could pay for through the one-percent fund. Total cut of two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, which is still not a flat budget, but comes staying close.
All right, if you don't mind, there's a motion. Is there a second? Is there any second? All right, there's no motion. Anyone else? Greg?
I just would like to address what seems like a sensible argument, that because we have enrollment that's declining right now by a significant percentage, and I heard this from a few of the people that spoke, that our budget should be going down. The difficulty, I think, with that argument is, is it, it doesn't work. And the reason it doesn't work is because the kids that are leaving, or the ones that aren't coming, or the ones that are aging out of the system, have not had the good sense to all select one school building to leave from at one time. They, it's, if all the five percent had come from one elementary school, you might be able to pull it off. If they had all, if they had come from, all from the seventh grade, you might be able to pull it off. But the problem is, they're sprinkled throughout, and you just can't achieve significant savings when the people that are departing, or the people that are not coming, or whatever the population decline is constituted from, are sprinkled. And therefore, until you achieve a bigger critical mass of decline, you don't get to the point where you can start eliminating FTEs. And that's really the problem, since personnel account for probably somewhat close to seventy percent of the budget, it's difficult to achieve those things. And so, if we want to cut the budget, we can do it, but we almost certainly have to do it out of program, because we're not likely to do it out of personnel beyond what the superintendent has already trimmed. And that's the problem. So, when, when we hear that the enrollment's declining, therefore, we should expect the budget to go down, you have to have a more nuanced view of the budget. And once you see, you realize that they don't translate. You may have a few, fewer supplies, but that's a tiny number in the budget. And so, there are a few things you could reduce, but they're tiny numbers, and that's the real problem. And it's frustrating, that's it.
Well, I don't think two-hundred-and-fifty, three-thousand dollars is tiny, and I think it makes an impact.
All right. Michelle?
Well, I, I, since the motion wasn't seconded, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it, but I think that it, a couple, a couple of the things that, that just came to my mind, firstly, I'm always a fan of moving things to the one-percent budget if we can, although we have used it so often to, for emergency repairs, I would be reluctant to, to, to schedule the use of it and then not have anything for emergencies, because every now and then, we have a leaky roof or something breaks, and we need to have the money to fix it. So, so I'm hesitant to dip too far into the one-percent fund. And when it comes to the technology, I think we've all talked about this, you know, with our long-range plan, which was put together by a very large number of community members, staff, board members, tech, technology and integrating the, the standards of the twenty-first century were really important, and so, we can't lose sight of that. At least our, the, the things that we are spending money on are, are planned by our long-range plan. It's the vision of the community that is guiding where that money is being spent. We've also heard that a lot of the computers that we do have are obsolete, they become obsolete so quickly these days. I don't know what the life cycle is. Is it four years? Is it five? I don't know. But I, I would imagine that as we are able to put laptops in the hands of our students, that we will eventually see less being spent on the labs, because we won't need as many labs, because our students will have laptops. But having students in the middle school now who are continuously doing their work on the computer and need to have a unified platform, I, I think it's, it's imperative that we, we do this.
All right, anyone else? Fran?
I was just going to say the same thing. Moving down our long-range planning is where it brought us to technology, and this is where we need to be. It is the next step moving forward, and it's only logical that we get the right technology into the hands of our children so they can continue to learn and grow.
Valerie?
Well, but we spend a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars in this budget year, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand Well, but we spent one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in this budget year, one hundred and fifty thousand in the previous, one hundred and twenty-six thousand in the previous. I mean, we, it's like we're not born yesterday. We're just not born yesterday. We are continually buying hardware. And yes, Goal One is very important. I would like it demonstrated. I'd like someone to comment on why we need one hundred and thirty MacBook Pro 13 for a PE teacher. One hundred and thirty that includes PE teachers, all sorts of different teachers. I'm going to exclude, of course, the art classes because we're doing some interesting things with the art classes that need perhaps some enhancement. For instance, why can't they use Chrome? What, between the Smartboard in the classroom and, say, a Chrome laptop, or any other laptop that's not thirteen hundred dollars? Is there a real deficit there in learning?
Okay. Karen Fields, could you address some of this?
Well, I just want to answer a couple of questions. The hundred and thirty thousand, or the hundred, there aren't a hundred and thirty MacBook Pros. There are only MacBook Pros for certain groups of teachers, the art teachers, the elementary teachers, world languages teachers. We spoke with different departments and asked whether it would be more appropriate to use a Mac or a PC. We currently have almost no Macs in this building. So there were certain departments that did request Macs, which I fully support. And in terms of the Chromebook, we actually did look at using Chromebooks for the teachers, and we ran into one big problem. There is currently not a notebook software by Smart that runs on a Chromebook. A Chromebook is an internet device. So it's great for the kids to access all their work online, Google Drive, those kind of things. But for the teachers, a lot of these laptops are being used with Smartboards. So that would have eliminated the use of the Smartboards with them because the software doesn't run on a Chromebook. So the computers that are currently being used by the teachers that do have laptops should have been pulled out of use years ago. Our elementary school teachers are using laptops that are six and seven years old. Our, we've been in scheduling meetings where we have people coming in that takes five minutes to start up a laptop. It doesn't run properly anymore. So what's happening is we are expecting our teachers to be digital in their lessons, but we're not providing them the access to the equipment that they need to do that. The purpose of the laptops for the teachers is so that they can plan on the same computer that they're using for instruction and that they're using when they meet with data teams. So they are all using the same sort of platform when they're together. This budget does not include, other than that Mini Art Lab, there is no hard desktops. So where we previously would have been purchasing desktops, we're moving away from desktops, and we're instead doing the mobile technology. So that as we move forward, we will need less desktops. The desktops that are currently in the building now will be reallocated and used for student uses elsewhere. For example, we're going to put together a virtual high school lab. So we can take computers that would not work great in other circumstances, wipe out a bunch of the software, reimage them, and give them a single use. So there is a plan to this, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that this was not a willy-nilly decision to buy everybody laptops. This is very much keyed in on Goal One and Goal Two of our long-term strategic plan, which is really why I believe you brought me here, was to help you sort of meet the goals of those two portions of the long-term plan. And this is my best judgment to you about what we need to do that.
So I do see that we do have some Lenovo ThinkPads, but they're a thousand each. And you're saying that our Smartboard works with anything other than these two laptops?
You have to be, for a teacher to be able to interact and create the notebook lessons, they're using a smart notebook piece of software.
And only, only the ThinkPad and the iMac can do this?
You need an actual computer to do it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we know that.
A Chromebook is not, a Chromebook is an internet device.
But why, but why does it have to be? I mean, I'm sorry, but you know, these are very expensive pieces of equipment that we're buying in bulk. And it's making a big impact on the budget. And I don't see the deficit, unless you're saying that these are the only two devices that will operate Smartboards, which by the way, I don't think the board fully understood before that you need this kind of equipment for a Smartboards. Is that right?
You do need to have a computer, not a-
I know that.
Not a Chromebook. You have to be able to install the smart software, so you need either a PC platform or a Mac platform.
But these are the only two types of devices for our one hundred and thirty staff?
Excuse me?
Of the one hundred and thirty staff members that are getting laptops, you have the two choices. One's a thousand and one's thirteen hundred. Those are the only two choices?
Well, what we did is we-
There's nothing less expensive?
We priced out two laptops, two versions of the laptops that we would like to be, we need, from the IT perspective, to be able to keep things consistent. So what we did is we found a base model of a PC that would do everything that we needed to do and priced that out for the groups that would be using PC. When it comes to Mac, you really only have, there's only certain models of Macs. That is not the high-end Mac. That is the base model Mac laptop. So it's not the high-end Mac. It also includes Apple Care, which is one of the reasons. It's eleven hundred dollar laptop, and then we're paying like a hundred and something for Apple Care, which is the warranty for three years on it. So that's what brings up the price. I think it's about a hundred ninety-nine for three years.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
One comment that I want to make sure and clarify is that we can't mistake the fact that most students come to us with some sort of a device with, they can consistently and efficiently take part in their lessons. The Chromebook gives them a consistent platform with which to work on their schoolwork. And I would never want a student who can only afford a, you know, Walmart throwaway phone to be in there pretending that they're doing this on their phone and they're not really working at all. And that's the reality, is that, yes, kids have device- No, no, please, because this is very important. We live, we're, we're very blessed to live in a very wealthy community, but not everyone is wealthy. And I'm not the principal for just the wealthy kids. We have a lot of kids with a lot of devices, but those devices will not always do their schoolwork. And I think it's very important for us to find a device that's efficient and at a low cost, which the Chromebook is, and supply those kids with that so that everyone has equal access to their education.
I think the other piece about the Chromebook that's very important to understand, why it was three grades, is because we have, we are instituting the Academy of Digital Arts and Sciences for all eighth grade, ninth, and eighth grade next year. That program requires that they, their curriculum is delivered electronically. It is the living example of Goal One and Goal Two. It's all, it's, there's digital components throughout the math, the science, and the technology curriculum. If we do not provide some sort of device, we really can't run the academy because they would not have access to the curriculum. So that's sort of where the budget, that's where my budget came in. Because in order to support that curricular change, we need to provide a common platform that all students in that program will have access to. And for two hundred and forty-nine dollars a student, that's a bargain to be able to make sure that they are all going to be having access, equal access regardless.
My motion did not get a second, therefore I just want to, I'm putting this out on the record that we need to save money, that we have to be mindful of the decrease in the population. And I don't think we were born yesterday. There's a multitude of laptops for those disadvantaged children or for anyone who wants them. It's not like we just started doing this with this budget year. Every single year, we spend a lot of money, every single year, on what is supposed to be the newest technology. And this year, we're even going larger. We have laptops. This is not just something that just happened today. That's all.
All right. Greg?
I just want to ask a question about the teachers' laptops. You mentioned the Mac product and you mentioned the Lenovo PC. Is there a reason why you're purchasing the thousand-dollar Lenovo PC, the specs for that particular device, as opposed to, say, going down to Staples and buying a five-hundred-dollar Lenovo?
Yes. We did, we looked at, we looked at the specifications, the quality of the machine as well. We need it to last a certain amount of time.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Karen. Maybe you should.
Oh.
See the voice. Yes, please.
Yes, we did, and we chose a laptop that we felt was a good base model that could be used across all of the curricular areas. Some science programs, for example, require a little bit higher end of a laptop. So we found a nice, a nice solid computer that would, that would run just about everything that we needed it to run. And it's not a high-end computer by any means. And just the same with the Mac. We went with the base model MacBook Pro, which is the only base model you can get now except an Air.
All right, let me ask you, that Lenovo, this, your processing speed was the primary driver of the cost? Or was it memory? Or what was driving up to that level?
It was, it was a, it was a mix of factors. But yes, the processor speed was involved in there, its ability to handle some of the programs that we want to run on them. So I think that it was a mix of those. It was, it was speed, it was what kind of processor it is, it was whether it will run, what Windows version do you? Windows Seven. That was another important factor. We wanted to be able to run Windows Seven.
Battery life, too, changes from Staples does it cheaper?
We also went for a commercial-grade laptop, which I think is important because commercial, they get used a lot. And we haven't, you're not going to have very good luck with buying something off the store shelves at Staples.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying, I'm not suggesting you should. I'm just trying to ask the technical question to get to the reason why the thousand-dollar machine that you're proposing is the appropriate one for the circumstance. That's all. I just wanted the record to be complete with that.
All right. Alan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that because I know this has been brought up, and this is a public meeting, and there are people who might be confused about this. You know, the difference between the thousand-dollar or the, whatever you see in your Best Buy flyer has to do with the commercial quality of it to last long. Because in this same argument we just heard from a non-seconded motion, why do we keep having to replace these suckers? Well, if we buy the cheapest one, not only would it physically not last as long through heavy use, but what people have to realize, and I'm sure they all realize personally, is that this technology, the higher, the more you invest in it upfront in terms of processing power and memory, and to some extent, less important now, hard drive space, the more it will be able to survive as technology changes every twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months. So yes, we need to run Windows Seven. Windows Eight's already out. We need this to be able to run Windows Twelve and not have to replace the machine at that point because each operating system and everybody's software now is on this track where it uses more processing power as the years go by. So we may find that if we can get something for five hundred dollars off the shelf or even at some kind of group rate, but that may serve our purposes today. But unfortunately, the way technology works is in order to make sure we don't have to replace them every year, we want to make the investment to something that's about eleven hundred or a thousand dollars so that will still be in service five years from now, and we're not making that five hundred dollar purchase every year. And I think, well, I'm glad this came out in a way so that we could, we could talk about this publicly for anybody else who doesn't understand the need of this. But I'm also a little sorry that we have to, if you know what I mean.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Karen. Kelly?
I have a few misgivings about this, particularly with budget. As Valerie said, we are down five percent in student population count, we're up one percent in budget. I know a lot of people think that it's because of our facilities, the carrying class of our facilities. But I see a lot of services that we have in this budget and other budgets in the past that are luxurious. I really wonder about the tech stipends, a thousand dollars each, thirteen of them. The students-
What, what?
We do tech stipends, the tech, technology change stipends.
Were you not here at the last meeting?
I was not here at the last meeting. But I do understand their purpose. I understand their overall value. I also think that, in my opinion, that students are expected to integrate technology into their learning, into their schoolwork. In the same way, I think that the teachers who are teaching these subjects need to be expected to integrate this as well into their jobs. This is a new job area. I see that we have extra costs like outside instructors for Zumba and for yoga that were proposed for Washington Primary School, and that's nice. But is this really an economic environment that we should do this in? And there's an issue of equity. The technology I fully support, it was, I don't know if you kept the idea of giving Chromebooks to the board members in there? The board members do not need Chromebooks.
Well, they're here.
We are, we are technologically astute. We are all connected. We all have some kind of device. We've never had anyone sit here and complain about that. I think that it's a nice gesture, but we could do, I don't know, twenty-five hundred dollars with those Chromebooks for the board could go to another program that would be probably welcomed by another actual department. I certainly don't need another device. And I don't know that that's a wise use of funds at this time. There's another technology cost, are they still going on the Orlando conference, the tech helpers?
They went on a conference this year.
Yeah. That's the kind of thing, that was very expensive, wasn't it?
No, not more than a normal conference for those people to come back.
Twenty thousand dollars?
I don't have it in front of me. I don't think it was that much money, but I can find out for you at the next meeting.
That's the kind of cost I think we, these are all services.
I think-
It doesn't improve a facility.
But you have to, but, one of the things that I just want to say, and I don't have to go deeply into it because I've said it before. If you are serious about your long-range plan and Goals Number One and Two, which are curriculum, Common Core standards, integrating technology, getting these facilities where they need to be, providing professional development for staff, then we have to spend money. It's the only-
Because I don't have a connection to you, but I understand.
But I'm just saying to you, and I don't want you to think that we sent people on a conference and they were there and they had fun. They worked from the time they got there till the time they left. They came back, they are initiating new ways of using Smartboards. They are working with each other. They are blogging with each other. They have wikis. They are implementing what needs to be done, and they are working with other teachers. And that's really important because we have to start to turnkey our people because we're so small and we don't have enough people out there with all of these experiences that you have in large districts. We have to work with our staff, and that's the model that we're proposing. So that was the conference. Do they need to go every year? Probably not. But this year, it was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to show people that we respect their work, we appreciate what they're doing, and they came back ready to give back to the district two hundred percent.
I would question whether we really have looked at whether that's the most cost-effective way to get the same kind of learning and professional development done. And again, I think that a lot of people out here who are going to approve or not approve this budget know that if they're professionals, they're going to learn the key element of their change in careers. They're going to be devoted to them. They're going to use a lot of their personal time to do this. I think that it's, you can only break it out so much. I think that just, this is a new world for teachers, and this is just part of what they will be expected to do. These stipends don't seem to have an end date. It seems to be ongoing. Once they learn this new, these new techniques and are familiar with this new technology, will the stipends end? Usually, they don't end. It just, you know, kind of goes forward. I'm also a real opponent of doing the universal preschool at this time. There's no one out there who owns a business, and a lot of our citizens do, who believes that you can have two very highly skilled special ed instructors, two fire professionals, expanded program to thirty-two kids. A program is required to be run only for two special ed kids and, I believe it was, a couple other kids to be educated with them. And say that it's revenue or expense neutral. That's simply something that I know a lot of board members are adamant about, and they believe that it's neutral in terms of cost. I don't, and a lot of other people out there who are, have experience running businesses won't believe that either. I think that one of our audience members said it was shell game in terms of cost. I worry about, I worry about that going forward. As Valerie said, we're going to have some big capital costs coming up. When we finally get to the point where we're ready to look at facilities, those costs are going to be very substantial. So if we are going to continue with the service cost and the high carrying cost and add to it high capital cost, we're going to be running a very expensive school district for five, seven hundred kids. I think that's the wrong direction.
Anyone else? Dar?
Bob, is there a way we can take some of these capital facilities that are specific to the middle and high school and take this against the one percent? I'm looking at the heating system repairs, tennis-
I'm looking at the heating system repairs, tennis court resurfacing, rooftop exhaust caps, that's 27,600. And certainly the district-wide security cameras. I know we are healing off from the elementary school, but can we do anything more?
At the current time, all of it, about $41,000 is accounted for
Right.
in the capital 1% account. So all you have to work with is, right now, $41,000.
But, but you do have encumbered about 75, you think, come back?
It depends on how they're making progress on getting things done. I don't know that answer.
When, when are we going to get that answer? Because it'd be great to loosen up some money there. If we have it, we should use it and, and not just sit on it.
Uh, I mean, I just got a purchase order today to do something with the diving board from Don. So they're making progress on some of those items that were in and approved for. Waring stands, getting the rest of that done. I, I don't have an answer. We have to.
But we do have 75,000 covered besides the 41 grand in the account.
That's correct.
Well, let's take the 41 grand and, and we have 27,600 dollars' worth of capital facilities that we can go against that in the expectation that the seven, or not all 75,000 is going to be needed and that we might perhaps indeed have an additional one, an allocation in the 1% fund. I, we, we gotta get this budget down.
Okay.
I mean, what's our timeframe on the encumbrance?
You know, I would just like to say that there are some people on this board who listen very carefully and are rather quiet. And there are people like me who talk a lot and listen a lot. And there are other people who need to listen. We need to keep money in the 1% fund in case we need it for an emergency. We can't encumber all of it now to make the budget better. That has been stated earlier tonight. We can't keep going over the same ground over and over again.
I do listen well, and I do know the 1% fund is for capital expenditures, not for emergencies.
Emergency capital expenditure.
And I do know that we do have within our budget a fairly good cushion from year to year that we can reallocate because we're not like municipalities forced to stay within the lines. We can take from other areas. So there is that kind of background. Maybe you weren't on the board, but there were many years where we didn't have a 1% fund. And when Bob was with us back then, we always had a reasonable cushion in the operating budget for the 1% fund. 1% fund is set up specifically for capital expenditures. And I see some in the operating budget that could be moved over to the 1% fund and we still have the op, the ability to make an allocation at the end of this budget year. Yes, I listen well.
Is there anyone else? Is there any motions with regard to the budget? You mean a motion? Fran?
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we set and approve the school district budget for the year of 2013, 2014.
At what percent of what?
Um, at 1.4, as presented, at 1.43%.
Increase.
Increase.
Which would give us proposed a budget for that next, this year, $21,660,890, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Second. Second by Michael. All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Any abstain? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, would like to, is there a motion to adjourn this special meeting? So moved?
No, no, no. We have to do the, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, is there a motion, do we need a motion to this, Bob? Set the district, the date? Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to set a district
Go ahead.
meeting date for May 6, 2013, which would then be adjourned to a referendum of May 7, 2013?
Some of...
Second. All right, the move is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, thank you. Now is there a motion to adjourn this special?
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
Bob, do we or do we not have to vote on the reallocation that Michelle's, um, previous in special meeting we had? Michelle's motion to rearrange?
The movement of those dollars would be coming forth as the May, what is planned for the May 20th meeting?
So you don't need that now?
No, we don't.
Anything further? Special meeting, all right? Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second? Yes. Laird, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourn. Now we have our regular business meeting. Do you want to take the mic?
Yes, please.
And, uh, let's pull back a quarter of. All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Region 12 Board of Education Business Meeting to order. I will take attendance. Valerie is here, I believe she's disposed for the moment. Tony?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
Fran?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Laird?
Here.
Marty is not here. Michelle?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
I'm here, Kelly?
Here.
And Michael. So we're all here again except Marty. Uh, just, um, Pat, did you just say a word about Marty?
Uh, Marty is at Candlewood Valley Rehabilitation Center. Um, I went to see her today. She looks great. She, um, hopefully is going to go home in the next couple of days. Um, and she has said that she'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, we are in touch with her, um, daughter, who's keeping us apprised, and she'll have some, uh, help at home. And, uh, but she was good. She just wanted to get out of that place today. She looked good.
All right. Valerie suggested that the board sends something, perhaps at least a card or something to Marty, and we'll certainly do that. So thank you. I know she's in all of our thoughts. All right. Uh, consent agenda, is there anyone who wants to be heard on any of this or take any bit off? All right, hearing none, and the consent agenda is approved. Report of the chair? I have none to add to what's gone on tonight. I will say that I was invited to the, because I'm sure most, all of us are, to the middle school graduation, which is on Friday, I think, June 21st, at 7 o'clock here. Uh, and I'm pleased to see also that our sports teams are doing reasonably well, our spring teams, everybody's excited, baseball and, uh, track team and softball, so I'm glad that everything's good. All right, superintendent's report. Dr. Cassantino?
Uh, yes. Uh, there's no correspondence at this point, but we do have a, um, two resignations personnel. Wanted to alert you to that. Um, the 4.3, the long-range plan, I just...
If, if we, ma'am, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just go back to 4.2, that's all right. The resignations, is there any? Normally we would, uh...
Tell me, what do you normally?
Well, just say that we accept the resignation with regret.
Okay.
So the folks could know that.
So moved.
That's, all right. So there's a motion, which has been seconded by Alan with regard to Ms. Lodi and Mr. Hermans, that we accept their resignations with regret. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It passes. Thank you, Michelle.
Well, because we usually have a moment to just comment, and I would just like to say that, um, I really appreciate what Mr. Hermans has done for bringing the string program to our school. He's, he's been very flexible and, and really wonderful, and I hope that we're able to find a, a replacement for him soon because, um, I think the strings program has been a wonderful addition to our program, and I appreciate the work he's done.
Okay. Thank you.
My second.
Yes, so?
Is, uh, the school psychologist position is going to be replaced?
Yes, absolutely. Being posted.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Cassantino.
Okay. The long-range plan in goal three, I just wanted to review the schedule with you and give you just an update on where we are. It's in your packet somewhere. Let me find mine. I know it's here because I tabbed it. Here we go. Um, April 3rd meeting has passed. The next Board of Education meeting, which is April 22nd, we are going to have, um, in the audience, the long-range plan goal three participants. And we are going to have a presentation from two architects, SLAM and Castle Booze. Castle Booze is going to give two presentations. They're going to give the first one on the capital needs study. Okay, that was done before we even thought about, well, maybe you thought about long-range plan, but it was done before we got into this process. Um, and then they're going to give you a presentation on the costs to renovate this building, which would make it a pre-K to 12 building, keeping the insides in the middle, the pool, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and the auditorium, renovating those, putting a middle school, high school on the right side of the building, middle school on the bottom level, high school on the top level, and then putting a pre-K to five building, including the district office, on the left side of this building.
So when you say the right, you mean the north side?
I'm sorry.
The north side by the tennis court is the middle high school?
Yes.
And the south side is the, okay, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, so that's what Castle Booze is going to give you. Then, uh, SLAM is going to give you also two presentations. One is building on this site a new pre-K to five building, keeping this building open, and, uh, a new pre-K to 12 building and taking this building down. Now, just so you know, that, that option will not have a pool. Okay? So that's what you're going to hear Monday night. Now I would like for you, Mr. Chairman, to allow, if possible, um, the people from the committees to also ask questions. So it may be, we'll try to keep the agenda short and really focus on that because this is their opportunity also to ask questions. After that meeting, the committees that are working will have all of the costs associated with every option, the estimated costs. And then they're going to work two weeks, May 8th and May 15th, really May 8th, to finalize their numbers over 10 years. And May 15th, they are going to do a presentation to all of the committees here with all of the options and the 10-year costs. At that point, at that night, Jonathan Costa, who has not been involved for the last month or two, I've been running all of this by myself, you can see the scars on my back. Um, um, May 15th, Jonathan is going to run the meeting and he is going to get the group either to decide which of their two favorite options or rank the options if they can't come to any consensus. Um, but after that point, and we will have looked at the numbers at that point, Bob's office, um, and Gary Lord, and just to really kind of get a handle to make sure we're in the right ballpark. On May 16th, we will have a morning meeting with the Boards of Selectmen and Board of Finance members, Board of Education members, we will post that, um, to just go over the options and the costs so that they have a handle on that. On May 20th, a presentation will be made to the Board of Education with either the top two, you'll get all the information, but either the top two or the ranked. And then, after that, it's going to be in your hands. And I have scheduled, you have two meetings scheduled in June, I have scheduled two special meetings, if you need it, to decide, hopefully, um, to make a motion to amend the regionalization plan and to accept one of the research options with the cost and to send something to a referendum in the fall of 2013. Um, so that's where we are with that. And it's really important now, um, uh, you want me to answer questions or you want me to keep talking? Well, she's, I, sorry, Dan. Let me just keep talking one more second, finish my thought. Um, the, the committees are getting, um, you know, a little intense right now because people are fe, starting to feel like, okay, we are going to come to some kind of resolution. Um, I think it's important, if you can remember as a Board of Education, let me just review the options for you. The first option is status quo slash current configuration.
The option formerly known as...
Right, exactly. The second, and I don't know if I have the exact numbers, so please forgive me. The second option is to renovate this building, like I just said. The third option is to renovate this building and keep Burnham open. The fourth option is to leave this building alone and build a new pre-K to five, five school here. Um, the next option is to take this building down, build a new pre-K to 12. Then we have these three options out there that the board, that my office is working on. One is to close the high school, one is to change every elementary school into a themed elementary school, they'd all stay open, and one is to make, uh, the Roxbury School K-2 and the Bridgewater School 3, 4, 5. Uh, keep Washington open, keep the middle high school open. So I just, you know, I have explained in probably 100 different ways to people, um, the sentiments of the most of the Selectmen and the Board of Finance, um, and most of the board, but I, I think people are starting to, to sway, which is fine, everybody has a right to make changes, that the keeping the schools all open is something that people, um, in the Selectmen's office and the Board of Finance aren't really, um, considering a solution to long-range plan. Because if you're not going to close a school, you're not going to deal with your increasing costs and your aging buildings. So eventually, I just want to let people know that this is coming into your pocket and your place on May 20th, and you're going to have to, you know, fight it out, do whatever, and come to some, because I really want you to do it before a new Board of Education comes in, and I want it to be done before we leave for summer break. Um, so by June 24th, I'm hoping that you can decide to send something to a referendum. So...
All right. Valerie?
Thank you for your Herculean efforts.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? All right, anything?
Or a Sisyphean.
Hopefully not.
So yeah, so I think, we'll see what happens. So that's that. The other thing, I just, I told you about, um, Marty, she's doing okay, so I just want to let you know about that. Oh, and TV show schedule. I just want, um, to do TV shows with people. So I have my calendar here. We'll schedule them. You either can come to my office or we can sit here. You sit down with me for 10 minutes, we talk about whatever you want to talk about, it can be two or three at a time. Valerie on the budget would be great.
No.
No, whatever. It's not a big thing. It's really very easy and we put it on the, um, so anybody who's interested, please let me know, I'd be happy to do that with you. Um, we also, just so you know, Karen's in the audience, we are, we should be hearing in the next, uh, week that we've received a grant for our television studio from, um, the Public Utility Regulatory Authority called PURA. Um, it hasn't been approved yet by their Board of Education, so I don't want to get into Board of, whatever, directors. Um, but we are very, very excited. Karen has done a fabulous job on it. And, uh, once we get that, we'll hopefully have a nice big, um, article in the newspaper and, and I can give you more information, so...
Although you said it has not been approved finally by their Board of Directors, you have information that leads you to believe that it will be?
Yes, it's that...
We have a draft decision.
We have a draft decision.
Congratulations. Well, we'll wait for the final word.
Yes.
Okay. All right, is that it?
Uh, that's it, under that section, yes.
Is that it for your report?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Community reports, I don't know if we need to go through all of these communications. Alan, is there any?
Uh, no, we are working on the newsletter and I just got what I thought was my final article. Excellent article. But now we may want one more about the TV grant.
Yeah.
Oh.[1760.73]
Oh, can you wait until after April seventeenth?
You can talk afterward, all right.
No, that's it.
All right. Education, Marty is not here, but I note that our next, April twenty-second is our next Board of Education meeting, and that will be an education committee meeting. All right. Education connections, Valerie, anything?
No.
All right. Facilities, Tony?
We'll report in a minute.
Reports in a minute, yes. Finance, Valerie?
We met just prior to one of our many meetings this morning, this afternoon, about six o'clock. Six o'clock. And just very quickly, we are tracking, according to our financial report, as to March thirtieth, we're in the black, one point four percent versus the one point three percent of the previous year. We went over all the items as usual, found no discrepancies or issues. Bob indicated that he was able to cap our property liability insurance three percent cap when the industry is going somewhere between fourteen and forty percent. So it's a three-year cap to increase for CERMA. Chirma. CERMA. CERMA. And we are extremely happy that that was the case, less than bucks. We did go over some of the internal motions for changing the capital budget, capital expenditures out of the operating budget, but we'll do a more formal presentation or motions, as Bob indicated, I guess, May twentieth.
After.
Right.
The budget passes, hopefully.
Knock wood for their best.
Yep.
Also, we had an update on the financial software, which is called Infinite Visions, as a change from Phoenix. And Bob is continuing the process of educating his staff and getting involved in that. Bob has also asked the finance committee, he is interested in possible adjustments for substitute and part-time employee pay. He'll start that process and report back to us, as well as start a conversation about cafeteria lunch prices and instituting a new breakfast program, since there is a change in the schedule, to have a breakfast program available to the kids who come here so early. We are probably going to go have an RFP, RFP for Non-Certified Pension Administration, so we can keep some of those fees down. And Bridgewater has finally, you know, solved some of its problems and has its financial statements will be available and we will be able to incorporate them in our financial statements. It will be a qualified opinion, but that's just a little accounting humor. But at least thankfully, we will have the Bridgewater numbers so that we will not be delayed any further in our reporting to the state. That is it.
Thank you for that very thorough report. Is there any questions for Valerie? All right, thank you, Valerie. Later, anything?
Nothing new.
Did you cover Dr. Costantino?
I do want to just let you know that the administrators are starting to work on the new vision and mission for the region based on the strategic plan, and I've asked Emily Judd to lead that. And at the next meeting, I'm going to put on the agenda to discuss, I would like us to consider the Thursday, June twentieth, to have a half-day of school so that I can do some professional development with the staff on the vision and the mission. We already have a half a day on the twenty-first, which is the Friday, so I'm hoping we can do that on the Thursday also, but I'm going to ask the principals to talk to their PTOs, see if they're okay with that. And if they are, we'll do more, we're going to do some faculty work in that, and then also invite Bob and the community, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, thank you. Negotiations, Greg. Okay. Policy, Michelle?
We met on March twenty-fifth and we continued to work on a form for the staff that goes with the policy four one one eight point five. It's a technology use form that we did for the students, but we did not do the staff piece. We also worked on another policy that looks at use of the web and blogging and took a look at a website one, but didn't get very far in that. We, the policy, the thirteen thirty, use of the buildings, we were going to, Don was going to come to speak to us and he wanted to get some more information, so that was moved to our next agenda. And we have one policy on the agenda tonight.
All right, thank you. Regional school repair, Tony, anything?
Greg is working on adjusting the language in the lease so that we can get those re-signed and have everybody on board about the latest changes.
Not at all, almost finished. All right, thank you. Technology, Alan, anything?
Nothing.
All right, transportation and long-range plan three. All right, thank you. Old business, second reading of policy six one four six, requirements for graduation and diploma designations, it's in your packet. Michelle, anything?
Yeah, this is the second reading of this policy. It is as presented before. I don't believe we had any changes, so unless there are questions or clarification, it is unchanged.
Alan?
Moved to adopt as a second reading. Second.
All right, moved to second. Is there any further discussion? None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, six one four six is approved as policy of the Board of Ed. Six point two?
We, we've been talking about increasing the enrollment, not only the high school, but all of the schools. Kelly and I are in the process of getting together the tuitions. It's not ready yet for all of the private schools. We will continue to work on that. We can have it at a future meeting. But the one thing I did send to policy, Michelle, did you get the policy on having staff students come to school? I had sent that to you. Did you get that?
No, I got the evaluation one from Jim.
Did we send it? Uh huh. Did I, and I give it to you?
Students of staff.
Students of staff.
Students of staff. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, you did.
Okay, so maybe we could talk about that at policy.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're working on that.
I didn't understand what you were saying.
We're working on that.
All right. Hopefully you're not going to ask us to brainstorm.
No, we're not going to brainstorm. Our brains are, our brains are strong. Yes, exactly.
That's it, Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay. Item seven, new business, any new business? Item eight, opportunity for public to comment on agenda items, is there anyone who would like to address us? Yes, sir. Would you come up, please? So you can be on camera.
Don't be shy.
Damon?
I would just like to have the Board on its policy issue, take a look. We had a policy, in the policy book, that when a class size dropped to six, the Board had the authority to bust that class, run out of school. So in lieu of the fact that we already have one class size predicted to be six students next year, that may come up, and I don't know if that policy is still in existence, but maybe you ought to check it out and discuss it as to how you want to handle a situation when class sizes start dropping precipitously. Okay?
All right, thank you. Anyone else who wants to address this? All right, thank you. There's no executive session, is there a motion?
Move to we.
Second.
Say all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, 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 you're right.
That's for, that's for your bonus this year.